Do all see fans of the pledge of flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a vision of justice for all. Well, welcome to our new venue. Welcome. First thing we're going to do on the agenda is board bravos and updates. Hey, my teachers, my teachers, you want to see how I can hear you? Perfect, okay. The board bravos and updates, we're going to talk about that and go around and if there's anything that you all want to discuss, we'll start with SCCLA. SCCLA, I feel like we talk about them a lot because they've got these rock and roll down there. So they just came back from the national conference and I think they had six hits. They competed and they had some silver awards and it's such a great organization because not only are they competing and they're doing a lot of standing in front of people and presenting and all those kinds of skills that we want you to have down there. It's a great experience if you have to see if any of them would never been west to the Mississippi. You could say this was the first time they came from California. So I want to give them a big shout out because they just keep being them. So we're going to go to anybody else?
I just wanted to say it was great to walk with you guys in the hot sun in the Fourth of July break, but great to see everybody in the community and see just, you know, people excited for, you know, individuals in new leadership positions in the district and celebrating that and just excited to see us. It's nice to get smiles, you know, from people. So that was a lot of fun and great to see the students and all the different things that they were involved with as well.
Well, I want to just say kind of piggyback on that. I walked next to John when we walked into the Woodville district.
Oh, yeah, that's what I said.
It was relevant because he was standing around next to me and I was like, whoa, he's the Woodville kid.
We brought up the Woodville.
Yeah, he was a lot of star, he was a lot of star for about the middle of the town. I was like, congratulations to you. He used to be.
That would came in the wrong way. So just a reminder that PAST, which is the summer theater program, will be ahead in their final summer shows this week. And so Chicago is at the high school Friday, Saturday, Friday, Saturday evening and then Sunday afternoon. I'm not seeing it on the other side, beginning at 10:00. So if you get a chance, I've heard it's great.
The only other add to add, you know, I'll second the Fourth of July, but an amazing event. Just turn a couple of those corners and just see the whole town. It was an awesome event. The TSA, Technology Students Association, had a, they sent two students to the national contest as well. Caden Schroeder actually placed eighth in the nation for this competition. So congratulations to him. Also, congratulations to Mr. Gesseney, we alluded to that and we have since our last board meeting named Mr. Gesseney, who says, "Is our new principal at Woodville elementary is going to be fantastic." Tons of enthusiasm, lots of connection and we all believe in this district, this district, a lot of it. So congratulations. Congratulations to Mr. Faust, who will be our assistant superintendent. He was unable to be here as a first board meeting. But congratulations to him.
You missed a meeting, that's what happened.
We did have that period in between years of by design, you know, fewer things were really happening in some of those communities. But that's not too long because our teachers come on August 11th. And our students will be here on August 17th. We'll go for a direction. So I forgot that.
Awesome, who else? Okay, next thing is community forum. Let me read this. The community forum portion of the meeting of the Board of Education is an opportunity for members of the community to informally address the board about the rising topics and leading issues for future consideration. Since topic grades may not be issues listed and advertised on the cover of the agenda, the community forum is not intended to be setting the dialogue of the board. Correct questions may be referred to the appropriate district personnel. For future response, answer briefly in a matter of procedure or capable of saying maybe in future agenda. Speakers who register at the reception area are asked to identify themselves, state their reasons for addressing the board. Please address the Board of Education as told from the chairperson rather than individual members. Pursuant to stated by our laws, questions or comments pertaining to an individual, student, employee, or community member cannot be discussed in the meetings. So it looks like we have two people. We're about to find the same subject. So Alicia, is your employer around? Don't you listen?
Dadoski. First, thank you for allowing me to speak today. I'm going to read from my script, so I hope that's okay. I am Alicia Lykert Dadoski, class of 96. My four children are fourth generation Highland students, a 2022 graduate and a class of 23, 26, and 28. I come to you today asking consideration for a change to a set date for graduation in an offsite location for the class of 23 and beyond. 22 graduation caused a lot of stress and anxiety for many families. Whether made outside graduation impossible and the alternate date was utilized and graduation was out of the pack. Each family received three tickets. On the day of graduation, families were scrambling to attain enough tickets for stepparents, siblings, and other important people to attend. Some had family who came in from out of town or even out of country who had to leave before the makeup date. Others had graduates who missed their own ceremony due to conflicts with college orientation. None of these should ever be an issue in this district. The primary and most important function of a high school is to educate and graduate its students. The graduation ceremony is the pinnacle of that function and the biggest milestone for our students up to this point in their young lives. It does our kids a disservice to have to pick and choose who they get to share this monumental occasion with. Schools all around our area and all schools our size in Northern Kentucky hold their ceremonies in large vented venues, most with unlimited tickets, at no additional charge to students and their families. We need to find a way to make this happen here. While I know it's likely that finances are the primary reason for keeping the ceremony on site, I've spoken with several area schools and potential venues along with former SBDM members who came close to making this a reality. I would be happy to offer my assistance in the research, planning, and executing a successful offsite ceremony. Another reason I've heard for keeping the ceremony here is tradition. The tradition of Highlands is in the classrooms, walking in the same halls, sitting in the same stands, and watching performances on the same stage as parents, grandparents, great-grandparents, neighbors, and friends. It is not walking across the pack stage or across the field on the big age. What better way to honor this tradition than by allowing all those who became before them and all important people in the lives of our graduates to have a comfortable, accommodating location for celebrating the new generation of Highlands alumni? Those with and without family history in the district overwhelmingly agree that a change in venue is needed. It's time to start a new tradition. I have printed a copy of an email and a list of comments, concerns, and suggestions from other Highlands families for your review. I do have one question that I don't know if we can address or not. I understand that in 2020, we had all but signed a contract with Northern to do graduation there. And the thing that they had done was they had said, "We're going to do a $10 fee." SBDM said, "We're going to do a $10 fee to all high school students that will go towards graduation for that 2020 class and then for every class going forward." They brought it to the board and the board said, "No." Do we know why? Is there a way to find out why? Because it would seem that would be the answer to all of the problems that we have with the funding.
I don't remember either. I haven't made it front of the board in so many days that I even know. And I'll also say that it's never been about finances, it's the best of my knowledge.
Can I ask what the reason is?
Well, you don't want to.
Tradition?
I think a lot of us, even I'm mixed on. Not just the part where they would be inside the school in the pack, but afterwards and then maybe go out in front of the school. It's kind of a tradition. I get it, I do. I sit there, my glasses, my glasses, I'm very.
Well, freshman 2026 is 300 students. So if we end up having to have it in the pack, we're in some trouble. Because they're talking, and we're going to have two tickets per family and we're already having to decide if your parents can come. Your, the child's parental, whole parental unit can come. And that should be something that they have to decide. Like, there should be somewhere that we can go that everyone who wants to attend and support that student can come. So I'm willing to help them whatever I can do to research. Yes, they did. And I, some of my family members sat in there. I have, like I said, four kids at the school and three, my mom and my dad sat in the pack. But my own children had to sit and watch it on a TV screen, which was nice. It was great, it's great that we had that option, but it's just not the same. Oh, I'll get some page two approach. There's also a pageant here from Truist with a quote.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
And Shannon Fox.
Hi, my name is Shannon Fox. I have a son in the graduating class of 2022. And I have a daughter who is going to be a junior this year who will graduate in 2024. I want to start off by reading an email that I received on November 22nd of 2019. And it was addressed to, or the subject is Highland High School Graduation. Dear Highlands parents and guardians, after many weeks, including a survey, a special meeting, a lengthy discussion, and a week and weekend meeting, the Siteboard Decision Making Council has decided on a graduation date and location. This decision was largely based on the school calendar. School is ending earlier in May than it has in the last five years. There are no makeup days in the final week of school as there had been years prior. The council also wanted to address the issue of space in the Performing Arts Center with for students and parents. As enrollment increases, there is continued need to reevaluate the graduation ceremony. The graduation ceremony for the class of 2022 will be held on Wednesday, May 27, 2020. I'm sorry, that's spaced 2020. At 7:00 PM in the DC Memorial Stadium, DC Stadium, sorry, sorry. Weather, the Paprika is the backup venue. The SBDM council will start immediately to reserve a date and create a logistic and physical plan for the class of 2021 to whole graduation in an offsite location. The availability of the offsite location for class of 2020 was too limited for consideration this year. The class of 2022 currently has 24 more students than the classes of 2020 and 2021. This will cause the pack stage and seating to be extremely limited and a solution will need to be in place prior to that graduation. I realize, Paul, I realize that this will be seen as bad news for some and good news for others. We have weighed the options and feel that a long-term plan is better suited than a year-to-year decision. We know that there are strong feelings for both staying on campus and for leaving campus. Please feel free to contact me if you have any questions at this point. That was fine, Matt, which I said the principal at that time. I totally understand that COVID put a wrench on the path. But coming to you as a parent of a blended family of five children who go to school in different places and all of the children have been able to be there for that graduation, watching my son live here try to decide which one sibling he was going to bring was horrible. And talking to family members and then asking, "How does a school district that is so amazing have such a disaster of graduation?" When you can't even have people there? That's, to me, is ridiculous. And if it is caused that is prohibiting that, that to me is also ridiculous as we all know how much money sits inside of this district at all times and there have been people talking about making plans. So I guess my question to you, and I can respect your tradition and how cool that is to do all of those things, but it's not you guys who are graduating, nor your children who are graduating. It's our kids who are graduating and wanting to have their family who is there or to be able to go to a venue and not have to sit with someone that you might not necessarily want to sit next to. Unfortunately, that is also my experience. And when you hand me three tickets and I have a blended family, that means it's myself, my husband, and someone I don't want to sit next to. All things that should be taken into account before traditions that people took on many, 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 many years ago and were graduating, 100, I was a graduate class with you. I get all of that. But I really feel like it's an injustice to these children with their hands in the pick and choose to come and see them graduate out of a group of people that is large. Because it does take a community to raise a child. And I feel like that community should be able to see that child graduate and move on to be able to next up with their life. So what do I need to do to make that possible? I'm open to taking a list. I'm open to joining the committee. I would knock on doors, but I don't want my daughter to have to graduate without her family and her friends there.
There are a few criteria that, this is a clarifying decision between the council and the Board of Education. There are a few criteria that the council has to live by. One is we're not, we don't close graduation prior to closing of school or in the teacher's classroom.
Does anyone know that? It's been a big day for me, a lot of new things, yeah. It's very exciting, very, very, very exciting. Okay, yes.
On your separate vacation.
I wasn't late this weekend. I was not prepared for that today, so I was like, no.
So that's an important consideration because the day signifies something that's pretty mid for us. And there are traditions that are grounded and expectations about what that day represents. Some districts, you get an empty diploma. And then we determine whether or not you actually met the criteria after we've had a chance to review it all. The kids who participate in our graduation, they have a live diploma because we determined that they had breakfast day, they had opportunities to do.
Okay, so that's a date.
So that is a challenge.
How is that a challenge on the research?
Well, so this year, closing day is Friday, June.
Second, the kids' listings the first, the first, because no, I said, closing day. So we just went through our roles and I don't sit there. And I understand that, so I'm just, so the date is really, we want to make sure that the teachers have time to put their stuff in.
It's an expectation and it's a challenge.
Okay, so you're just saying that it has to be after closing and then we need to give teachers the time. So really, if we'd be starting a tradition where everyone could be included in the graduation, we would just need to make the community aware of the fact that this will always be held after graduation or after closing and probably the week after closing.
So it would be some distance, for example, this year, if they set the date after closing day, they could not set it on Sunday.
Right, right, yeah.
Because if you have one day, that day, then closing day is. So that would be an expectation. To me, it's around the student experience. So there's some practical reasons and there's some student experience considerations that can be involved. And as you acknowledge and as the email talked about, there are not, there's a non-unoverwhelming consensus around this decision. I receive emails too that said, "Please don't take it away from campus."
Right.
We have maximum flexibility that is on campus. And you also have the idea of distance away from that closing day when students finish could detract or enhance the experience. This year was, this year definitely posed some challenges that I think that even I can count on. For me, but I didn't count to acknowledge that. But having two separate days created some problems that I think they're working to address.
I mean, I respect your flexibility and everybody goes flex, that's great, I mean, it makes things easier. But when you're talking about something like graduation and again, when you have that whole community of people that is coming in from out of town, out of the country, and not being able to see people graduate because you wanted to be flexible with how you could do graduation. A kid doesn't care about that.
Well, I mean, with all respect, I didn't speak wrong.
Oh, no, 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 neither can I. But I'm just saying, like, I know that you're trying to say that flexibility could, is a reason. But if you are making a statement as a board and as a school and as a community that this is what, you know, this is what graduation is going to be, the things that you need to be flexible on are a lot less if you're choosing a venue that's indoors. Now, granted, with your grades, that is depending on weather. I mean, you know, when my kids first started here, they said they had a better chance of getting off at the break. Because we all remember the rainstorm that knocked out all the electricity. They thought it was amazing, two days off of school. Now they get to snow days. Kind of weird, not the tradition, but look, something new and everyone's adapting. Totally get that. But again, something that you wouldn't have to deal with if you push graduation into the middle of June. And not that I want that to happen, but when you're talking about last day not being until the second and possible last night, day not being until fifth, sixth. Your first day for graduation is the seventh and the first weekend that's available is almost midway through June. So I guess it also leads to the question of, you know, and again, I, this is my personal opinion. I know everybody does it different. That's how you guys choose to do it and that's great. But I feel like there could be flexibility around how you're choosing to do it and how it's going to work for parents. Because I know that I would rather wait till our vacation or wait to go somewhere until I can get to see my child graduate. And if that took a couple extra weeks, then maybe that's what it has to do. But I would way rather wait until June 15th to watch my child graduate with everyone there, knowing that it is going to be on June 15th. And if I want to call my, her godparents in California and say, "It's going to be on June 15th", yes, please lie yourself and your wife and your three kids here so that they can all be a part of Kylie's graduation because it's the coolest thing for her cousins to see that, then they could go ahead and do that and enjoy standing in a stadium and watching their cousin with their big huge face on a giant matron or something like that. It might not be the quiet little environment that you want, but everyone that she loves and wants to be there and see that moment would be happening for her. And I feel like that is where the most important thing lies. And I know that we've done the whole, let's ask the students what they have to say. I don't know whatever happened with any of that. I mean, I'm not trying, I'm coming to you guys from a forum of, there are multiple Facebook reels about having, you know, getting a group of people together, coming here and doing this. And I've sat there and I've watched and in July of 2019, they asked people that if you do not have a senior and that you do not participate because they thought it was going to be a big deal. It wasn't and nobody did anything. And now it's time that nothing's still, you know what I mean? Like, nothing went, and COVID probably put a big stop to it, and now here we are. And yet again, another group has started talking and there are a lot of people and a lot of people that might not show up or want to show up or could actually say something in front of someone. But there is a lot of push behind it. I would love to have a conversation brought up and a list of things that really do need to be accomplished to have this happen. And trust me, I definitely would be here if I have to. But I really feel, I just, I don't understand, I don't understand how we're still moving graduation dates and we're telling people that they can only bring three people to a graduation or six people and then you're going on Highland's Facebook sites and watching parents or community members who don't even have a child, who is graduating, snatching up tickets and doing all this. I work full time. I can't sit on Facebook and try and gouge other people's tickets that are being handed out. I just want my family to be able to watch my child graduate in a place where I'm not sitting next to someone else and it's 400 degrees and you have your feet up inside of your chest and your kid's all the way in the back row, like, "Hey, buddy, good job." I'm sorry, that's the tradition that everybody absolutely loves. I'm sure it was great when there weren't other kids there. It's not great when they're over 200. It was recognized in 2019 and I just want to know what we need to do to get back. So I don't know if you want to email me a list or call me with a list. I've never been here before, I don't know how it works out. But just where to go, how do you get the bottom, what are we even going to start? I mean, Alicia's my friend, we're going to do it together.
So what you've done is have gone to Sitebase and had discussions with them. And I know, you know, they're a decision-making group, so they're.
We're friends now.
Discussions amongst themselves. You brought it to us to discuss it at this point. So there's really nothing else that you have to do right now.
Okay.
But we appreciate your coming and sharing.
Sorry, I apologize, I apologize. I was just thinking that I never went up to any of this. I know.
I felt down for them, there's much to base for. John, I want to learn about how we'd like to do this, but I have a theory just to maybe on the other side. I don't want to have a.
And I would say that that is usually true. And my son's best friend is a parent, has a parent that thinks that it should be at school. And I get that, I totally do. But this is not exactly the same four times that you're speaking of. And a lot of those people who want to have, it's, it's not as much as you would think. I don't, I personally don't think. I think that there are more people out there that would rather be able to be a part of their, of this child's graduation than to limit and make it be in the pack and go through the stuff that we went through. Were you there this past graduation? Okay, were, was anybody?
Yeah.
I'll actually ask.
I just hit graduate.
Yes. And I know you did because our kids went to CCD class together. And I get it, it's just, it's a very, as being a blended family, we have five children. You, to tell, I mean, did you have to pick between any of your children who got to come to graduation?
Not that I recall.
But that's great for you. But we're not all you.
I think all of that in 1952, 250 kids, very, 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 very. Much smaller back, but nowhere. I'm not suggesting that's the thing we didn't want to do today.
I'm not either, but I mean, there were a lot of things we did in 1952 that we don't do now. Isn't that what you said? Eighty-two, okay. I thought you said fifty-two and I was like, I mean, that's cool, but, like, this is a long time ago. There's a lot of things I'm going to do there. Okay, I mean, even in the eighties, but yes, I totally get it. Yes, I went to school without air conditioning, sat at a.
I'm not a fucker to that. I mean, I understand times change and everything. And I also say I'm open-minded about it because, hey, I think two of my kids graduated in there. One of them graduated in Oregon, one of them graduated in Thomas More. If I can recall, I think the reason we had those is we had.
Yeah. Which I also learned today, it is interesting because people keep saying, and I know, they used to have it offsite, but nobody, you know what I mean? Like, it is a bunch of jargon. Everything we read on the internet is not true. And I love that too, I'm telling you, it's amazing. So I get that there's all this other stuff. But at the end of the day, when you're sitting there with a big group of people and you're talking to a lot of people and the majority of people are the ones saying that they want to change and the minority of people might not be saying anything, then I'm going to need you to stand up and open a conversation of what we're doing here. Because this district is not getting smaller. You guys have created a huge problem for yourself that you are the best. And people come here because they want to be here for school. I did not move here because I wanted to live in an old house that I'm going to have to do stuff to all the time. I moved here because I wanted my kids to have a great education. And then they have the time of their lives and they get to do all these things. And to be able to have whoever you want to graduation, I get that my experience is different than yours. I have, you know, five children and my child was trying to decide which sibling he wanted to be there. But you know what I mean? Like, it, it didn't work out for me the way it worked out for you and that's how life is. But I feel like we should maybe be more flexible on the side of including the community that actually helps raise these kids than being exclusive and not letting family be here. I've definitely gone in 19 minutes and I'm really, really hot. So if anyone has anything else they want to say. Oh, whatever I can do, please let me know. I'll try and come back.
Okay, next section of action. Yes, I have five or six of them. How are you all?
We're good, how are you?
Good. So for this evening, we have a second free for two qualities. We recalled last month, we did our KSBA updates, we did a review waiver and having our first review, our review for this. But these include that retirement and graduation requirements. The retirement piece is that it would be, if you are announcing your retirement, the sixth leave buyback, or 30% for our class financial type employees, would be effective if you retired and then you announced prior to the end of the school year, that given year. So that is something to clarify and make clear the date. And the second isn't anything new with the graduation requirements. It would be to be more specific, we're aligning more what the actions are through the high school and their council policies. It's not bringing any new action or new requirements for our student sets at the school level. I think we're going to do this proposal altogether. So I need any voting for the adoption of the proposed change to policy. 03.17 by the retirement and 08.113 on graduation requirements presented for a second.
Oh, 3.175 on retirement and oh, 8.113 on graduation requirements presented for a second.
So what?
Sorry. All those in favor?
Aye. Our second item, number B, would be, a letter B, would be a lunch program recommendation. Prior to me discussing recommendation, I do want to make sure that we are aware that we did look into extensively this school year. The cost would have been analysis of considering going back on the federal lunch program in more detail than in past years, just with our supply chain issues, the cost of items, the accessibility of items. We wanted to ensure that we're being visibly responsible. We are making changes moving forward for this next school year to continue to be a surplus. But at this time, we would still recommend to be made off of the federal lunch program and practice as we have for many years, as we are making a profit and we are able to consider the new quality, the new nutritional value and make sure that it's the best experience for our property and our students.
Questions?
I know you're on top of it. I know you've taken a deep look at it. So I appreciate you doing that. And you've done that for many years. So I appreciate you continuing to do that. I know it's, when we decided to do it, it was unclear. I think it's, it can be done. So I appreciate you working and having fun and making that happen.
Thank you.
I think the circumstances change every year. So we might not be able to hear it. There's a significant amount shifting back for the federal government right now. Even those who initially recommended that we consider it, the recommend we've received on the same path that we're on. I will say because of the thorough review that Jay, the entertainment director, really finding more helping and nutritious opportunities is going to be a full run.
You'll see a standardization of our menus so that we will have at all schools some more items so that we can look at truly the cost benefit of the item that we're serving so that we make sure, one, the experience, the food quality is to our expectation. And then also, is it worth serving that food continuously over and over again for our programs?
I do like the inefficiencies, too.
Yes.
All right. I need a motion for the approval to opt out of participation in the federal lunch program for the 2223 school year. Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. All right, next.
Next would be school-wide fundraisers. Our five schools each year give us, provide us a list of all of the fundraisers providing the school plan tab, not our booster organizations, but looking at school-wide fundraising. So I will present to you on our screen a list that would be similar to all of those in the past. We did remove a couple, but all of those with the exception of one, the setup project was under Johnson Elementary. We've discussed and we thought through that it was in previous years. I did ask the stakeholders about what the meaning of that one would be. And that's going to be similar to their pillars and pathways program. It's going to be a fundraising project associated with that. So again, some schools have near me, they have closed a pathway. It will be promoting and supporting that programming at this school level. All others, I think, will be familiar with.
Any questions? I need a motion for the approval of school-wide fundraisers for the 2223 school year. So what? Second?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, this is my second. Okay. Lisa? Second?
Lisa, the second. Thank you.
Teacher's class.
Sorry.
Yes. Next would be our student discipline code of conduct. With the draft that's been presented to you this evening is the exact same draft that you did see last year. We made no changes. We did have a conversation at leadership with our principals and discussed some items within it but all of the remaining code we wanted to keep intact. We are going to be making some changes to attendance in the sense of making sure we're promoting attendance and having students at school, but that is not specifically within the code of conduct itself. So we need approval of that act.
Now, it's re-inferred today and I couldn't figure out anything that had changed that was...
Yeah, it should look the same. Actually, it would be this third year that we've had the same version. Three years ago, we only added the safety measures related to COVID. And that, then before that, it had been years the same. So it is exactly the same as what is said in the past.
And procedurally, the Board of Education would adopt a district-wide code of conduct. Some of these councils have a different degree, you know, different policies. They just, they can't be in conflict with the district.
So essentially, we want to keep that, yeah, more like a number of laws and then there are specific policies around those things. The schools can't put those in.
Correct. And there are levels, ranges, the consequences.
Well, obviously, it's going to look different in elementary versus middle and cross. Okay. I need a motion for the approval of the student discipline code of conduct for 2223. Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The last item for me would be our SRO agreement. This is the annual contract that we do venture into with our city of Fort Thomas. We are extremely fortunate to have the funding of our SRO provided strictly by the city. And so each year, we do work through a contract. This contract is identical to and will allow us to have an SRO on campus from the beginning of August to the last day of school. Identical to past years.
Questions? I need a motion about the approval of the school resource officer agreement of the city of Fort Thomas.
I think a motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Jamie. Hey, Jerry?
So Jerry is helping to address the mess down at the swim club a little bit. So I'm going to present on Jerry's behalf for our RFP. All right, we're putting for your consideration a request for a little RFPAC design at our middle school. It's now our oldest building. Venues and its air conditioning in particular, but HVAC in general is in need of some renovation. Probably could have been renovated a couple of years ago, but it is time. And so the request for proposals that we're putting forward would be architectural and/or engineering design proposals to engage in some of those renovation processes that we can plan this fall without a bid. Hopefully sometime this fall and begin work next year. In your mind, there are actually two different RFPs because we want to gather some proposals with two different approaches. As a district, we have a few different capital interests that everyone pursues. This is the one that is new and familiar to us. And so one way that we can consider funding this project would be a guaranteed energy savings contract, which is through an energy bond, which has very little impact on our bonding capacity as a district. It does take the savings that you would realize from both LED lighting and a more efficient HVAC system and allows you to pay off debt through those savings. And so it's a creative and perfectly sanctioned way you can be in order to fund some of these projects. The RFP in this setting requires a 45-day period of time. And so we would request that we approve this RFP and we have 45 days to consider any of those. In the meantime, we also have an RFP for the conventional approach to doing these renovations that make use of our bonding capacity. And so we'll get some architectural drawings and proposals through a conventional way and give us a little bit more time to make some decisions based on what are our other capital needs versus what they recommend so that in either August or September, we'll come up with a recommendation data for some of these. So tonight, I ask you to approve our RFPs so that we can bring actual information.
Is the question to be on this financial act approved?
Not the roof. Financially, if we, the guaranteed energy contract or the energy bonds, we had advice to separate those two projects. And so the roof will be intentioned within the next two to three years, but it's not imminent today. And so we separated that. The HVAC project is by far under our need. It does include a domestic water, hot water heater at the middle school. It does include attention to a boiler at the high school. And it does include finalizing our change toward to LED lighting. We're about, probably about 60% LED lighting currently and we're just kind of piecemeal it as it goes along. So we would do consideration of that. We're estimating, it would save the equivalent to days of utility dollars of about $170,000. That's a ballpark estimate of cost just because of the annual efficient systems, which we pay for in the long run. It's guaranteed in terms of kettleware usage. We had, we did renovations because there are three sections. There are actually three boilers in place. There's one primary boiler and there are two that supported it through high times of usage or basic error. Right now, we're on one machine. We need to look at that potentially salvaging part from the other two and hanging the one we have possibly mine.
We need to propose that. Obviously, I think, so I'm curious as to why we're doing this.
That would be part of the, that would be part of the review. It's... And the engineering.
Yeah.
No, this is what we said at the top of this. We, not all the rulings are new. We're going to stay out of this situation when we did previous. Yeah, and in the energy savings law, I agree, we will see, we've got our general budget, it's a five, easy spot. This is going to be key to make sure that they have a spot and we're going to be competitive.
Yeah, we're stable from a general standpoint. Some responsible decisions last year. And the irony, and we've said this before, the irony of increased property assessments, especially if they're at really high levels, is that there's actually a gap in state funding. So while we've experienced a pretty significant increase in local property values, our total revenues next year as a district will be slightly less than they are in this past this week because of the reductions in allocation. So it's stable, but as you said, inflation is at historical levels. And we've got to keep our general fund at a point where we can respond to market demands. So I do feel like we're in that position.
Anything else? I need a motion for the approval of our P for architectural engineering services and guaranteed energy savings contract for each back design. Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, the next section are the discussion items. And so board committees, anybody have an update or a wish? All right, well, our breakfast, so breakfast has been very busy, unfortunately, it's been very busy. So we've ordered the food. It's one, our early day breakfast is obviously eleven. So we've ordered food, we've ordered the giveaway for the teachers and some of the letters out. We're already giving donations, so we're well on our way. We were really lucky last year because we moved it back into the high school and are able to do it pretty reasonably. So we were able to do things through the year for teachers too. We did a couple breakfasts through the year. So I'm hoping that happens here too. So we're well. So put that on your agenda and I'm going to ask for donations. Do you all, those gift certificates that we gave last year? All right, anything else? Okay, the consent agenda is next. With all the board members having had the opportunity to pursue any questions about all the items contained therein, approval of the consent agenda. I need a motion for that. Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Losing answer. All right. Brian, other business?
Other business, we did a little prayer.
Okay, so I think where's yours?